All right, we're going to record this. And Ben has been doing a great job taking the notes and enabling us to get them out there. So we're calling the meeting to order at 3:07. And what I wanted to do was introduce John Gunther, who we're happy to have on board. And I really think it's going to make a huge difference for our direction here at the county. And I know that our office and all my staff are excited about being able to work with a brand-new team in planning and zoning and community development. So we're excited and we want to be great partners and offer as much support and help and do whatever we can to be, to push us in the right direction. So, John, I don't know. I think, Leanna, do you know, have you met John already? No. All right, Leanna, you might want to give John a little overview of who you are.
Hi, John. I'm Leanna. I am the Associate Vice President for the Utah State University Campus in Moab.
And it's great, great to see that construction moving forward. Yay!
Yay. Yeah, so we're going to, we're, we're going to be moving our operations from our downtown location up to the new building when it opens up. And that, that location will go on the market soon.
And it looks like you'll be over in that new location, I think March, you said, correct? So that's exciting. That is a long time, years in the making, so.
It's a 20-year vision.
Oh, and we have another attendee! Oh, my!
The committee is expanding.
That's good! That's good! We have more members! I love it! I love it! And that's your, that's your helper, huh?
Yes, this is, he keeps me sane. He keeps me on target, don't you? This is Peter.
Oh, hi, Peter! It's nice to meet you! Oh, how cute!
Peter's got to graduate from kindergarten.
Oh, wow! Who is that?
And he'll be a first grader. Cool. I know. Good man!
That's awesome! That is great. Okay. So, John, how long have you been on the job now? Like, a week?
Two hours.
Two hours?
Yeah, no, it's been a week. I should know everything by now.
You've accomplished such a wealth of experiences. This is awesome.
Yeah, well, I'm excited. You're excited, Elaine. It's great to share in that excitement. You know, so don't over-pump it too far, okay? So, yeah, so I could give you a bit of a thumbnail of some strategies. Emily and I have kind of shared some of those, if you don't mind.
Sure!
Time I would have. But, by the way, I raised, I raised three kids, well, two boys in planning. They've been into a lot of planning meetings. And I've got lots of stories about them attending meetings. In fact, they'd go to Planning Commission hearings, and you know how dry those can be, Emily. And they would not say a word through an hour and a half. People always thought they were being drugged or something. How could you do to those kids? So, they grew up, and they were three years old, three years old and four years old. So, quite amazing sometimes. But, you know, you put trust in kids and they actually come back, and they pay you back sometimes. So, not always, but usually they do. So, here's, here's a couple of strategies. I'm going to be drafting this, and I know I talked to Emily and Elaine about this this morning. One of them is to rewrite the general plan from a very high-level perspective within three months. That sounds ambitious, but the goal is to actually interview every single department head and community leader over the next 30 days and develop strategic, kind of strategic initiatives, both at current, what's currently there, what's been adopted, and what direction you're headed strategically. So, obviously, Elaine, you're a near-important part of that interview process. And then, at the end of the 30 days, we would all get together and go over a game plan. And that's pretty high-level, policy-oriented goals, strategic objectives. There are some outcomes that would come out of that, likely indicators. There'd be an implementation strategy that would be looked at, and including the grassroots steps. And the grassroots steps is really going out to the public. That's one approach to take. The advantage is you start to do this high-level review, and you start to assemble all the goals and policies that you currently have, and try and reinvent them. And take the baseline information that you have and start crafting that together. And you could do that from a top-down approach, I've found, and it actually works really well. The only thing is it's not a sync with the real public grassroots component. That would come later. And then, we would start doing the public outreach and public engagement strategy as part of that. Actually, we would embed that. Now, you don't have a very big county as far as population's concerned, but you've got a lot of things going on. So that makes it, that makes it bigger in a lot of ways. And so, one of the things that's really important, I think, is to think about strategically public engagement, decision-making, and strategic planning. The county does not have a great strategic plan. I think everybody acknowledges that. So that should be part of the process and should be embedded in these steps we're taking. So what we're talking about is the strategic general plan exercise that actually embeds all of the components together, adds every single element that you can think of. There's a bunch missing right now, and we would put all of those into the plan and collaborate and put those together as best we can. There would be probably two or three public meetings as part of that process to go over some objectives. Visualization's always a good thing if we do 3D visualization. We did a lot of it when I was back home. And then, we would start linking in and thinking about our next steps as we go through that. So, let me stop there. That's kind of the first, a good functional general plan is so crucial to an organization and to have everybody eating into it. So that's kind of the high-level approach. So I'll stop there and just see what you think of that. And, Leanna, I don't know, I got a PhD from Arizona State University. We usually work with universities very closely. We worked at the School of Regional Planning at University of British Columbia on 3D visualization. We actually published a couple of articles around how that works with climate change and the impact on sprawl and mixed-use development. That, that documentation's available. It's actually in what's called a Decision Theater in Vancouver on their campus, which we should, we should all go up and visit Vancouver at least. And then, we can take a look at some of that visualization. I don't know if you've seen it, Arizona State University has a National Science Foundation has a purpose-built Decision Theater on the, just off the Tempe campus, which is really amazing, too. So it really helps council get an idea of what visualization looks like. So we worked with those at Arizona State, too. Anyway, and then, we've always, always worked with universities on community indicators. We have a community indicator project from Eastern Washington University. Emily's somewhat familiar with that, that we worked with, with Patrick Jones, Dr. Patrick Jones. And we implemented that through the Shalane Douglas County, which is a central county in Washington, in 2008. And it's still running, and it's a great visual for, and a great, great indicator, kind of a good report card process, annual report card. There's a newsletter that's published every three, three months. So, those, the interaction with the university is really crucial. I used to teach English composition also in English 101 and English 102 adjunct, too. So I got a dynamic writing curriculum if anybody wants to learn to write. I didn't invent this. I got it from somebody else. So, anyway, I thought I'd give you a bit of university background. I do, I have a published paper on writing and public policy that's, that's out there. So, anyway, that's kind of a thumbnail. I think the other thing, I'll stop, though. Let me stop and just see what you think of that strategy. No one wants to say anything?
I think it's a breath of fresh air. What can I say?
It does, it does sound ambitious, but I'm, so I'm curious, I'm really excited to kind of watch how that, how it, how it plays out.
Have you been through that process before, Leanna? No?
Not, you know, we, I've been through, you know, from different, you know, being a faculty member, you know, to being here, doing sort of strategic planning, but I'm always, I always like to learn from how other people do things.
I've done this a number of times. It seems to be successful. It sounds like a broad, big, broad project, but actually, it is very engaging and you learn a lot of things. And you don't always nail everything, but if you can get your arms around most of it, it really starts to work together. And you build, you really build relationships doing that.
John, coming from the county, I know we talked about this briefly, but I'd love to actually hear you lay this out. What other stakeholder groups specifically are you involving this? And, you know, does it include San Juan County or SITLA or any of the state entities as well that operate in the area?
Yeah, so Dylan Hoyt just sent me an email. In fact, I just, I'm just reading it here right now. He says, he's, he's in a new position for resource management planning, and he wants to have a virtual meeting coming up. He would be one of the contacts, for example. You probably know him. But that's part of the process. Emily, is actually through the process, we start to engage and add to the contact list and build, you know, that community around, you know more of this than I do, but start to build the interactive kind of relationships that are there and add to that list. You never get through everybody, though. I have to say, there's a core that's really important. And one of the challenges we've always had in the past is First Nations or Native groups. We had, we had a hard time getting them to the table. We, we did get a couple, but it was really, really tough. So some, some people are hard to get to. That's one of the other things. But I think you think you build that contact relational database as you go ahead. I've got a list of all the department heads here. We would interview every single elected official except judges, probably, but the attorney would be important, reporter, the assessor, as long as they're willing, of course, not forced them. And then, every single department head, and then, any non-NGO group, chamber, any, you know, Elaine has lots of contacts, obviously, Real Estate Association would be a key one, too. Any home builders. We try to hit associations more than just individual, of course, that's, that's the important part. Because the individual stuff we can do later. We can come back with the public enterprise later. So, that's the top-down approach. And as I mentioned, in planning, it's not always the greatest approach to take, but it is the quickest way of getting something out there and then starting to see what the land, the territory looks like, the path looks like in front of us.
And, John, Dylan Hoyt, who I know very well, he was the, he was the Dead Horse Point State Park manager up there, and he was amazing. He, he just did an incredible job up there managing that park and turning it around. And it's actually one of the most profitable parks in the state. So he, he knows the community, and I think he could be very helpful in getting engaged in these, these topics.
Yeah, he just sent an email here at 1:00 today, and I just responded, "We've got a virtual meeting on, on Monday." Yeah, so it's those kinds of, you're a good contact, Emily's a good contact, Leanna's a good contact, just build that database. So that'd be the first thing I would do, is send out to the key stakeholders, the database contacts, and then we would just add to that as time went along. And then, we'd pick the core ones out of that because we can't do everybody. So, and then, we would start looking through this. So we would take every single element in the general plan, and you've probably seen the list. Have you seen the list? So every single element, decision-making, public safety, transportation, parks and rec, culture, utilities and infrastructure, and, I mean, I should have listed these off. And then, I'm just seeing, looking down at them. But anyway, the finance one fits in there, land use fits in there, transportation, active transportation. All the elements are really silos in which you're trying to do in comprehensive planning and make them work together. And then, and the partnerships, communication strategy, organizational analysis, IT strategic plan, all of those fit into a general plan. You know, most people don't think of it that way, but that's kind of what makes the general plan really tick, is people start to use it that way. And then, we put a big, strong implementation plan together, which involves everybody. And then, indicators. And the indicators are really the thing you need for measuring as time goes by. The indicators project, as I mentioned, we got that launched in Shalane County within a year, but that, that would be ambitious for here, I'm thinking. But we already have some of that going on, right, Elaine? And so, I think it's tapping into what's already there.
And we, we have Brandon Bartosz from Intrepid Potash, who's on, on this council, and he just joined. So, Brandon, I don't know if you have John Gunther, who's our new director for planning and zoning for Grand County, has, is presenting. So I don't know if you have any questions or any comments. Feel free to speak up or put them in the chat. Well, I think all of the, I think the path forward that you're going to create is really one that is most needed, and I think will, you know, bring to the surface critical issues that, that need to be addressed. And, and then, long-term, you know, as we have a long-term vision for our community, which is, again, much, much needed. So, how far out do you, John, in your experience, you know, is it a 15-year, a 10-year, 15, 20? What generally, how far forward do you, you know, is your vision or is a vision or should a community have for a vision?
Yeah, I would say 20 years is the normal strategic planning horizon. You don't want to have something that's so short-term that you have to keep changing or tweaking it, so. But you would, it's not that it stays static. It's, as we say, a living document, so you would want to revisit it at least every five years. A master plan, in my view, is about a five-year horizon, whereas an OCP, if it's really well-crafted, that's the gift. An OCP, a general plan, we call them OCP. A general plan, if it's well-crafted, actually should have a really good comprehensive linkage. It should have really good function between all those silos. And if that's working, that should be a good 20-year plan. But usually, that's not the case. Usually, you have to go back. So, the kind of precision master plan's going to be launched within, within, probably two or three weeks here. We just met with Chuck Williams with the city this morning, Bill Jackson and I, so it's just working through that, that area, too. That would reinform a lot of things we're talking about because a master plan is inductively starts to change policy, background data, implementation ideas, and transportation and land use are connected at the hip. So they work together. And we don't have, we've got a lot of land use challenges here, too, I think, long-range I mean, sure. So that's not unusual. So those kinds of master planning exercises that you have going on, too, Elaine, anything like that, would reinform as we go along. So those are important. So that's, that's the high-level kind of strategy. And we can, we can guide this as a group, you know, in some different directions. I'm just putting the roles of a steering committee together, what that would look like and who needs to be involved. Emily would probably be named, I'm thinking, from the Planning Commission. We would have a commission member. We probably have somebody from engineering, which is usually a pretty important parks and rec, whatever that looks like, somebody from the state. We don't want to get the steering committee too large, but I think that kind of guidance is pretty important. It's usually the, the CEO, the county administrator would be important, maybe it's Mallory. So it's just getting those roles clarified. I need to get that done fairly quickly here so we can start to bounce some things off of people. So, and then, and then, kind of, planning a tent, preparing a way forward. Once that's kind of together, the other part I was mentioning was this client engagement group, which would be, the goal is to get that started the third week of this, of June. And that would probably be a client engagement group. We call them a CAIG. I call them a CAIG, which means that it's surveyors, developers, home builders, chamber, and it's basically associations meeting around the roundtable discussing things. It's staff-driven. We manage the agenda, and we engage on a regular basis. And that's the transparent part of getting things out and working kind of on the ground. So our project stuff doesn't languish, and we start looking at our turnaround times and deliverables. And that's so important, and we can't do that together. We have to, we have to do it with partners, and we have to do it together. So we invite every stakeholder to the group, like, university would be invited. We usually invited utilities to be involved, and they would give reports. The city would be invited to do their report, too. Since it's a bit of a roundtable, it's not just us talking. And it's meant to be really engaging, and it's meant to be transparent. So some of it's raw, some of it's rough, but that's kind of the nature of planning. So that's the on-the-ground stuff, which we can get going. I think we can get going. Most commissioners love this stuff because it's really out there. The other part of this is getting community engagement, community associations and public involvement going. I don't think there's anything that exists like that right now. I know there's a Main Street group Chuck was saying, and they operate kind of, I don't know if they're, if they're commission-appointed or city council-appointed or how they work. But that's, those kind of touch, you know, community touchstones are really important. So if we need to, we'd go to the commission and start to work on community group establishment and, and reference points. And, and some of those I've found in the past in the county work well and some don't work well. So, but you haven't had a history of doing that, I don't think. Shalane County had a history, 20-year history of doing that.
Yeah, wow. Well, I think it's, it's really going to help, again, help our community. I think it's going to make a huge difference in, you know, moving the, the community forward and looking and having a strategy over the next 20 years that we can continuously nurture as, you know, we, we all move along, so. And it's kind of exciting for us to be where we are. It's almost like we have a, I don't want to say clean slate, but I think we do, and we can just start fresh with looking at all of this and where we are. So I take it as a positive, and I think it's, let's see here. So, do you want to drop in, Emily, or?
Sure. Sorry, didn't mean to stall conversation.
No, no, please do.
Sort of chaotic day. So the sort of good and bad news for squeezing this into a couple of minutes is we don't have a big update to give yet, largely due to, we've been following the city, just a little bit of sort of unexpected turbulence in all of our schedules right now, and Carly's end and my end. It's just been a fault for us to coordinate this month. So, but a just quick update of where we're going. So, first of all, we're meeting with Curtis next week. I'm bored just to sort of see how eager he would be or keen he would be as an entry point to some of the conversations of people who might not be as open to conversations with locals, especially local officials. The last, or last time we met, we were talking about how SITLA evaluates risk and value and what we could find out from that. And going back to its formation in 1970s, I didn't know this, Carly looked this up. Apparently, SITLA explicitly states that public value is not something that will be brought into the conversation when evaluating the opportunity for projects. So if there is a public impact through increased cost of housing or environmental impact that could affect the public, SITLA has it in their bylaws that they just don't consider that. Now, I have a feeling that that is something that is open for reevaluation, if not already, considering every major bank, every major insurance company, every major large government is currently reevaluating their actuarial tables right now. And so, like, we need to figure out how malleable or how fixed that is, but that's one. It's just like, can we get to the state of the state? How public is that process? How accessible is that? Second, second big thing is, you know, we brought this up in the context of that project on the southern area of 191 down by the university. This is going to be a long-rolling process to be able to make some inroads there. So I wasn't anticipating within a month being able to rock the boat, essentially.
Okay.
I, I do think what, what we see is an opportunity to, hopefully, with Curtis' help or other people's help in the area, find some common ground for conversation. One is, is there openness to evaluate like a, some sort of venture-based incubator, ways to create community value as well as fiduciary value for SITLA? If that's not, that's not a go, you know, how much, how much can we push back to say, can we at least hold this development to our assured housing ordinance and try to ensure that we, some portion of this is actually guaranteed for workforce housing or at least attainable housing for locals? Because otherwise, who's going to bust the tables for the restaurant of all these people in the lovely million-dollar homes?
Exactly. I have to apologize for my forcefulness last meeting about SITLA, but what I wanted to do was exactly what you're doing, is sort of engage in a conversation about how we can maybe, you know, things in our world are changing daily. And what, what was and always was doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the same. So I'm happy to, to hear that, and, and I don't mean to be such a bear or brute about it, but I'm, I'm happy that we're going to have, at least have this conversation because I'm just trying to look out for the welfare of the community.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and the reality of the situation on the table is that the groups that tend to be represented by the board membership and, and, you know, SITLA operating leadership is not necessarily representative of Grand County, and we know that there has been some history there. So I think the biggest opportunity is to, to come at this from the perspective of risk. Risk to our community, risk to the region, and, and risk to SITLA, quite frankly, you know, or to the developers that they invest trust in. So we know that there's water risk. We know that there is general economic diversity risk. And we know that this is something that's not unique to land development in southeastern Utah. It's, it's something that every single major government, every single major industry and institution is evaluating. So, so that's our goal, is Carly and I want to figure out, can we understand if they are currently reevaluating their, their tables or their, their evaluation process? How public is that? Can we get public input? Is there opportunity for some, some form of partnership? And if, if yes, does that open up the lanes for more creative ways of creating value in our region that benefits small entrepreneurs? For example, I would be very interested in, this is a sort of messy idea, so don't consider it any more thought out than this, but some sort of grant-matched investment pool of $5 million or so, if you could spread that out across 10 entrepreneurial groups or new companies picked by some stakeholder board, you know, some portion of those are going to have venture-based value that could return over time. And if not, it's, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, a relatively small experiment to try, and it will still create some value. There, maybe there's something there. And then, like I said, worst-case scenario, pushing back just as far as our sovereignty as a community and our needs as a community and the absolute extractive nature of the project as currently planned and what it could do for our schools and what it could do for our, our families and our, our residents, which is, you know, we, we do need to fight, we do need to put up a fight, but hopefully, it won't come to that.
Yeah.
With that, I'm going to drop the mic and I'm going to have to jump, but.
Okay, well, I, I feel really good about your commentary and your update. And I know that you and Carly will figure a way out, or a way to approach this. So I'm, I'm just happy that we're looking at it rather than just sort of not doing anything about it and letting it happen, you know?
So I think there's compromise and partnership. We just need to find the right path. Carly and I will give more frequent updates once we are able to make some.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Bye.
And, John, we just had Lacey Shumway join the call. And Lacey's the director for the Chamber. She was who I mentioned to you earlier today. So she's a part of this advisory council, and Gabriel Hoytek, who's the commissioner, is on the council. He's not here today. And then, Brandon Bartosz from Intrepid is here. So we don't have enough, I wanted to say, we could probably, we don't have enough people to vote, oh, no, I think we do, for the approval. We have a couple of discussion and action items that we'll go through very quickly, but approval from the May 5th. We had sent those out, Ben captured those, and, and I, so I would need a motion to approve the minutes from May 5th. Would anyone like to?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute from May 5th.
And do I have a second?
I can second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
I guess we have the eye.
Yeah. All right. So we wanted to review and approve, approve the action items that are on, John, we have a folder that we put together with all these documents that we're dumping in from this council so that we, you know, if you need to go to it, it's a reference. And we'll continue to update those on our end. But I think it would be good if we, maybe at the next meeting, can get Gabriel engaged in this, since he's on the council, because the hope was to go through this, discuss it with him, and then he could at least update the county commissioners on the status of all of these action items that we're working on. So I'll, I'll have a conversation with him, and we were going to create a possible subcommittee for, to keep sort of tabs and updating these action items. And Gabriel and myself are looking at it. Well, we have every. everybody, people involved doing and working on these goals. He and I were going to discuss kind of where we are, and then he would bring it to the commissioners, because what we're trying to do is keep this in front of the commissioners on a regular basis, so they understand that we're just not another group over here meeting and really not, you know, of, of being productive, but we really are serious about this diversification, and there are just so many layers to it. So, um, one of the, um, points that we would need, uh, or action items we need to vote on is to create a possible subcommittee that would include Gabriel and myself, or it could be someone else to, um, to handle that and move it forward. So, if someone would like to make a motion on that, um, creating that subcommittee, two-person subcommittee, uh, that would be great.
What is the subcommittee called?
It's, um, it's the Review, Review and Approval of the Action Items for the Grand County Economic Development Action Council, and it would be implementation and circulation within the county commission. So, it's really a subcommittee for the action items for the, from the Economic Diversification Action Plan. I know, that's a mouthful. All right, well, we can table that. We can wait till the next meeting for that. Uh, and we, uh, confirming, Emily, uh, I would like to have a. I'd like to, um.
I think Lacey's trying to communicate, but she, it's.
I can't, yeah, I can't hear.
Can you chat, maybe?
Oh, good idea. Lacey, do you wanna write something in the chat?
That'll take a few minutes.
Yeah.
There she goes.
I'm waiting for her to do. So, John, I, you said tomorrow, there's a meeting about Rocky Mountaineer. So, um, once you have that meeting, you'll be able to update on what that comes out of that meeting tomorrow. Awesome. Okay.
Mainly, uh, lawyers, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure it'll be very productive, and, right, so I'm at the table, uh, with Valerie and Christina, and I'm not sure who's there. I, I would bet the Rocky Mountaineers have an attorney there too. So, uh, it's part of the discussion about their rights and, and it's, should be collaborative, should be collaborative, not polarizing, so.
Cool. Okay, well, you can just, cause we had discussed that at the prior meeting, and then, um, we are, um, what, uh, Ben, you might wanna give an overview of what you did today that's in that file for everyone to look at. So, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Sure. Okay, folks can hear me? Wonderful. Um, I am going to pull up the file in question, which is in our shared drive, or at least should be. Um, I can see on the shared drive that everyone's supposed to have access, but does anyone need the invitation sent out again? I know that it can get buried in emails.
Oh, we might need to ask.
All right.
Do we have John to that shared folder?
John's been added to it, but I asked because I figured, John, you've probably got a million things, so I can send it again if you need it, but.
Got it.
So, we have, excellent. So, we have here a sheet, and I will share my screen briefly. Okay. So, uh, we have here a, uh, incentives and funding sheet, and as it states up here, uh, this right here is, uh, basically a verbatim, uh, reproduction of what you find in the diversification action plan on pages 21 and 22. I will say though, that we also added, um, REDTIFF, the World Economic Development Tax Increment Financing. That was not part of the diversification action plan when it was created, but this is another tool that we definitely want to leverage. Um, so basically, we just have the incentives listed here on the left. Uh, we have the, again, verbatim stated goal from the diversification action plan. If this is something that, you know, over time, we don't need to be reminded of, and we'll get rid of this. Um, and then we, I just included, uh, basically a URL from, uh, utah.gov for each of these, uh, if you need a little background. Um, I certainly did. I even threw in a YouTube link there for the TIF, because, um, for me at least, it took a minute or two to wrap my head around it, so there's some great explanations online. Um, and then also down here, we have a other funding sheet. So, I'm gonna navigate to this, um, and this is something that we are going to be, um, sort of, uh, i- it requires maintenance, we'll be updating it over time. Um, but this is basically different loans and grants that are brought to our attention that we think could really be, um, potentially leveraged on a wider scale. Um, so, I expect to be updating this. Elaine, do we get an update like every two weeks, you said, for, for this information?
Um, it, I think, well, not every two weeks, it's probably every, uh, as soon as there is a change in the type of funding, so it, it's random. But I think with the, um, the new funding that's gonna be available, um, and this comes from the Southeast Utah Association of Local Governments, because I had asked them to put together one place that we could go that would have all of the opportunities for, you know, just being, um, putting the Economic Development Department together. We needed a, a place to have and locate all of this, uh, these documents and materials that we could, we could share with individuals who need funding or need, needed to apply for grant funding. So, this is gonna be updated by them. It will also be updated with whatever happens through ARPA, whatever the funds, whatever, uh, trickles down from the state or from the counties, so we can add to this. But we're hoping that we can utilize this, um, updated information for all of us on this council, in the event that we do have someone that we run into where there's a question, or, um, you know, trying to help, uh, our local businesses with business, uh, retention and expansion, uh, and that's where our focus is. So, that's basically what this information will help, uh, to, to provide. So, this will be continually sort of a living, breathing document.
Yes, thank you, Elaine. And, and on that note, um, the third sheet here, it's just like the action items spreadsheet, we just have a place for comments. Um, as August has said about previous documents, um, it's always best to, you know, just leave a comment before you edit something. Uh, that way we can, you know, keep track of, you know, whose idea was what, where things were, um, kind of leave ourselves an audit trail. But, um, I think, uh, the, the main takeaway is that, you know, the incentives and the funding listed in this sheet is, uh, by no means the end-all, be-all. Uh, and so, this is definitely something that, um, should be a collaborative effort. We'll be working in this office to update the other funding, um, and should we all ratify any more, you know, capital I incentives, that will be here as well. Um, but never, uh, never a bad idea for someone to propose something new be added to the sheet. So, you can add it here, and we can check back in on it during regular meetings, or, you know, one-on-one, just reach out. So, I think that's all that I want to go over on this. Elaine, am I missing anything big?
No, I think that's, I think that is it. But actually, while you're here, cause we're gonna try to speed up our meeting, um, I wanted you to give the quick, we'll move up giving a quick present, quick presentation on women-owned businesses and the opportunity for Grand County, um, women-owned businesses.
Great.
And, hey, Ben, can I just jump in there and ask a couple of questions? So, this is an ongoing.
Absolutely.
Living document. People can actually comment on this and put information in there on different types of incentives or grant applications. The Babett Center, I don't know if you know them, for example, they, they offer smaller types of grants, usually, usually, uh, completely funded grants, but, but I applied for one before I came down here. I don't know, are they there?
Is that correct?
No, Babett, B-A-B-B-E-T-T.
That.
Babett. Babett Center, yeah. Uh, so, that was one thing. I don't, have you thought of using SharePoint for, uh, how these, I don't know if you have that as software within Microsoft, but, cause you can actually track all of that through SharePoint?
Um, you know, I have not thought about the best tools. I mean, I, I also like Microsoft more. Uh, that's just me, but it seems that everyone here, uh, i- is into Google, but I don't know, Elaine, if that's something that we have, uh, the flexibility to look into, or if everybody needs to stay in the Google suite for now?
I don't know. You know, I think we need to talk to Matt, and maybe John, that might be something that we wanna talk to IT about, um, since we're all using, um, Google.
Yeah, no, it's, that's just a not, it's just a comment, that's all.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that could be something we address with him. Actually, we have Gabriel Wojtek that joined the meeting, and Carly Castle, uh, from the city, um, who joined the meeting. Uh, and thank you, Carly. I know your schedule is like totally crazy. Um, so, I appreciate you being here, and.
Sorry I'm late, I really apologize.
No, don't worry. Emily gave us the down and dirty on what has happened, so that's good. And, um, I, I don't know if you met John Gunther, he, uh, is on, on, here at the meeting, and, um, we're happy to have him here. So, he was just going over, uh, which will, uh, Ben will recap in the meeting notes about his, uh, strategy on how to move, um, our community forward. And, um, there were, there was an act, actually, now that we have you two on board, there's an action item about creating a small subcommittee of four. Well, the one subcommittee is you, uh, Emily and Carly for SITLA, uh, which we need to, uh, have a motion made on, so we can confirm the two of you on that subcommittee, cause we just discussed it at the last meeting. So, if someone would like to make a motion, uh, about, um, the SITLA Committee for Partnership Discovery for Emily Campbell and Carly Castle, that would be appreciated.
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Great. Uh, and then the other, uh, committee we wanted to create, two people, was the, um, review of the action items in the document that sort of takes the points from the Strategic Diversification Action Plan, and we put them in this document. And I think Gabriel and myself were actually gonna work on that committee, so we just needed an official, uh, approval for that. So, I would need a, um, a motion, to make a motion to approve Gabriel and Elaine as a subcommittee for the impu- implementation and circulation of the action items. So, if someone wants to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay, second?
A second.
All right, and any discussion? All in favor? Cool. All right, so those were.
Sorry, Elaine, I'm sorry I'm late. I haven't, I don't have an excuse, uh, like Carly. I literally had five o'clock written down to this meeting, so that never happens to me, so I guess I get a, I get a pass every now and then, if you'll, if you'll allow.
No, no worries. We're, we're good, we're good. Um, we know everybody has a million meetings, so we're trying not to, like, you know, drag this on. Um, so I think, let's see here, we wanted to discuss, um, on here, we had discussion, uh, process of reviewing land use code to remove unintended barriers to economic diversification, which is in the, in this strategic action plan. However, I think we ought to push that back, knowing that John is gonna be looking at everything, and maybe we can have a, a more meaningful discussion about that. John, I, I, I mean, I don't wanna discuss that now. Would it be best if we pushed that down the road a little way?
No, I don't think so. I think you, you move ahead with implementation at the same time you do strategic planning. So, as I mentioned before, if you have any cases that come up, let's put a SWAT team together, and let's take a look at how we can manage those and do best practices, and, uh, and think about how we can remove those barriers. It should be, I, I, I realize there are barriers that are real, uh, and planning tends to have some of those, uh, but we are there to, to take away the perceptions of barriers. So, uh, I think we're there to help make sure that people are received well and they're encouraged to do development.
Cool.
Within reason, of course, and so.
Sure.
I would, I would never stop that. I would keep that going.
Okay, wonderful. That's fantastic. All right, um.
By the way, I put the link in, uh, Ben, to the Lincoln, it's called the Lincoln Land Institute. Carly would probably know about this, and, uh, Lincoln, Lincoln does a lot of investment in land use, uh, kind of strategies, especially water. Uh, and the Babett Center is kind of a subset of that.
That's great. Thank you. Uh, and Ben, I don't know.
Thanks.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about the, um, quick meeting on the Women's, um, Own Business, uh, Utah, the site?
If now is a good time, I know we just had Gabe and Carly join, if other people need a jump. I know schedules are intersecting, um, but I can take five minutes if it's fine.
Let's just quickly give them an overview of what we uncovered.
Great, sure. So, um, uh, the, um, WBC Utah, the Women's Business Center of Utah, um, Elaine and I met with Anne Marie Wallace. Uh, I've lost track of when that was at this point. Was that two weeks ago, week and a half ago, something like that. Um, and then I, yesterday, met with Sarah Barstow, who is working with WBC Utah. I think you all probably know her. Maybe, John, you don't, but I'm sure you'll meet her soon. Um, and she is going to be, um, a representative in southeastern Utah, definitely representative for Moab, um, within WBC Utah. But, um, I'll just talk briefly about, um, about what they do. Actually, I guess I should rewind real quick. So, as an Americor Vista, part of my charter is to, uh, be here and be supporting women-owned and minority-owned businesses, as well as entrepreneurship in those groups. Um, and so, it was a great opportunity to talk to the folks at WBC Utah. They're, uh, very impassioned, and I think that they're, uh, really effective at the work that they're trying to undertake. Um, so, the, uh, Chamber already has done some posts for WBC Utah, and they actually have a dedicated tab on their site, which I think is awesome. Um, I think that, uh, the Grand County site might be a little too big for that, but I know that as economic development, as our office starts to move towards having our own little site, um, I think that we're also going to have a designated landing page to kind of advertise their services. So, WBC Utah, they're a technical assistance center, um, using, you know, a mixture of funding that includes federal. Uh, they're working to connect businesses with grants and provide counseling and training to women-owned and women-operated businesses. Um, I will say that networking, which is something we're, you know, always thinking about in economic development, um, is not as much of their focus as the counseling and the training that I mentioned. But that being said, um, the directory that I'm about to show you, which is kind of their flagship thing right now, um, I think that, uh, with a wide adoption in Moab, I think could definitely encourage networking. Uh, this is already a tight-knit community, um, and as it is, it's just great to, you know, be able to say, uh, you know, I can peruse this site, you know, they're kind of marketing it as an alternative to Amazon or something, you know, I wanna peruse this site, I wanna shop local, I wanna shop women-owned. Here are all these sites that are, you know, all these businesses that are listed here. Um, so, I think that's really exciting. I think could definitely encourage networking, even if that's not their primary goal with it. Um, and I will also say that while these resources are marketed to women, um, uh, Sarah actually told me yesterday, Anne, um, mentioned that some percent of their business, um, goes to non-women-run businesses, and Sarah told me yesterday, it's actually about 10%. So, you know, WBC Utah really is there for all of Utah. Uh, women-owned businesses are their primary focus, obviously, but they don't really turn people away, which I think is great. Um, so, on that note, I will just briefly pull up the directory here.
And there's no cost for the business to join. So, I think that that's the big, uh, plus, that you listed, you know, you'd have your bio, all about your business, and it's not gonna cost you anything. And then you can network throughout all the other, you know, counties in Utah where, um, the businesses are listed. And I, I just think this is wonderful, um, for, uh, this opportunity for women-owned businesses.
Agreed. So, uh, on that note, this is, uh, where you land when you go to check out the directory. Obviously, you can browse all of Utah, but they even break it down, uh, by county, which I think is really cool. So, if we go to Grand County, um, Sarah is really doing good work, because in the last few days, I think she got four more businesses to get listed on here.
Oh, wow. That's great.
Which is very encouraging. So, um, you have this, uh, landing right here, where you can see the different businesses that are listed. And, uh, you know, one of the things we want to encourage, um, people is that not only is it. And, you know, one of the things we want to encourage people is that not only is it free to sign up, but it's super easy. I kind of did like a, like a halfway, like a mock signup process to see what it would be like for a business owner, and it is super easy. And there's a good amount of autonomy or agency. Once you list your business, basically, you know, you can list hours, you can list URL, you can list your address and have a little picture, obviously. You can have a little map thumbnail to like really direct people right to where it is. And then you can also add other, what was described to me as keywords. I think search indicators is kind of what they are to talk even more about who you are as a business owner, particularly if you are, you know, from an immigrant background perhaps, or you know, perhaps you're from the black community as well. All these things can be listed on the site and kind of show people, you know, hey, this business is here, come support us. So this is what, you know, the directory looks like when you click into it. Like I said, we've got, we've got 12 businesses. Last week we had eight, so I think that this is a really cool thing. I've communicated briefly with Lacy, who has done some of the outreach for WBC Utah on behalf of the Chamber. And so I'm going to be coordinating with her and Sarah in the future to make sure we get the word out on this, that we get, you know, Moab's businesses to sign up because it really seems like, it really seems like there's no downside to this. This is just another way to not only get your businesses out there, but you know, show this part of this, you know, inclusive community that might not otherwise make it to the top, but is totally there. So on that note, I only have one screen. I'm going to turn back to my notes. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
I know it's a ton of talking.
So I'm not sure if I got this. Maybe I missed it. Did you actually put this into a, where's the line? This is coming from the launch page. I don't know if you know the concept of virtual communities, where you actually go into a website as a portal, and then you have a shopping link, you have an education link, you have a regulatory link. And it's like you're walking down the street and you can then pick those various places. And so I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the website to see what it looks like. Is that how this would fit in?
I wouldn't, oh, go ahead Elaine.
Well, I, the state, it's actually coming out of the state where this organ, you know, the women's. So we're not, we don't, we have not really gotten into the nuances of the site other than knowing that they've designed it and developed it and everything. But if you go through it and you see that there could be better use or added use because we're upgrading, we can certainly, they're open, they are open for all suggestions and recommendations. So I don't think they would feel bad, you know, they wouldn't take offense to anything. We just, they want to make the site better and they wanted to really help women, you know, to get, to grow their businesses. And they want this network of all these businesses around the state to help support each other and help all of us support them in our local communities, or if we're going to another community, you know, to shop in those. So John, any, any ideas you have, it would be great for you to let us know and they're open to all suggestions. We just.
Just to come.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I, I just had a comment. That may not be, you know, it, it may sort of be supportive of the, of the concepts that WBC is supporting. But I would say in Grand County in particular, that I'm sure you've become aware, Ben, that there's a, you know, extremely strong contingent of women in leadership throughout different types of entities, whether it be people like Elaine and Leanna and Carly and Mary Emily or Jen Sadoff at the hospital, or you basically go to any nonprofit organization in town. I'm not sure if I can name one that has an executive director that's a man. So that, that certainly could be a consideration in terms of creating support and inspiration for women-owned businesses here.
I think the Free Health Clinic's the only one.
Is it really?
Thank you. Yeah, so actually, and, and Gabe, you actually reminded me that the three things that can't make it into the directory are male-owned or male-operated, multi-level marketing, and nonprofits. That being said, you know, it's, you know, it's our goal at Economic Development to be engaging everyone all the time. We've spoken with Wabi Sabi and we're engaging other nonprofit networks. And we definitely want to see, even if they can't be, you know, listed on that directory, how they can help get the word out. And you know, WBC Utah is also, like I said, offering the training and counseling services as well. So we want everyone to know about that. And, and on that note, they also, they were able to pass on sort of a digital media kit to me. If we are looking to make any sorts of, you know, low-level, you know, adverts for them or something, they're looking into, you know, more serious advertising in the county. But if people are looking for materials like that to kind of spread the word, either with their own business or something else like that, you can reach out to me because I have the, I have that media kit material. But thank you, Gabe. That's, yeah, definitely something I've been thinking about since I got into Grand County. It's a, it's a very cool track record that the county has. I like it.
Awesome.
Like, well, not real, real quick, I was just looking at that website and it has not only the women, but also the SBDC, you know, the Small Business Development Center. So like Moab, it's the one that, on our campus and, you know, the other small business development centers.
Cool. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ben, very much. And then last meeting.
Thank you all.
Last meeting, Emily had brought up a question about the wage gaps by sector in Grand County. And August did some sleuthing. He did some work and found some content that I think will help us. And that, this information is also in the folder. But August, I don't know if you want to go through what you have, what you unearthed there?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I hope there's not too much lag and that I get through this successfully, given my relatively poor internet connection. But basically, this is from Department of Workforce Services data on sector-by-sector wages in Grand County and comparing them to the state. And it's sorted in order of the left.
Oh, I think we lost you. What he's put together is.
Vermont.
Is the information that I think Emily was alluding to, but we wanted to provide that information, which is, let me see here.
Uh, sorry, my Zoom crashed.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Let's see. Let me see if I can, what?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? My Zoom crashed. Okay, let's try this again. I quit, so I quit, I quit some things. Let's see if this works.
August, August, would it be better if one of us presented while you talked? Would that lessen the interweb load on your end?
That's probably true. Is it okay now though, now that I've quit Google Chrome?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, let's try this again. So what I was saying is that basically we have industries on the left. This is pulled from Utah Department of Workforce Services data. And it's sorted by the percentage of jobs in Grand County that are attributable to that sector. So these are kind of big buckets. They're relatively broad, so they're not super specific, but I think they're, they're illustrative of kind of the underlying trends. So you can see that Accommodation and Food Services makes up all, a third entirely of our entire economy of its own. Retail trade, 13%, Arts, Entertainment and Recreation, 9%. Those three categories are what past, the past department considered tourism. We've been using that at the moment going forward. So, so you can kind of see how, how big of a sector that is and how big of a part of the, how big a part of the economy that is. And the next column here is the difference between that number and the same number for the state of Utah to get an idea of what makes our county different than kind of a baseline at the state level. And you can see that the Accommodation and Food Services is, there's. Okay, this is horrendous. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna send this file to Ben and have him present it and see if that works better.
Thanks, August.
Just as I'm really getting into that spreadsheet.
I have a couple of questions that maybe we can be thinking about beforehand. Do you know this data, when it's collected, just for example, like I know that just this spring season, wages have really gone up, and I'm just wondering what kind of lag or delay there is in, in reporting. And then my other question is like with the food and service industry, if tips are included in that wage?
Good question. I don't know about the food and service industry, but this is all just to have a kind of a non-COVID and beyond baseline. This is a 2019 whole year average to try to, you know, eliminate some of the seasonalities. So it's annual for 2019. All right, Ben, I'm just gonna email this to you.
My thought would be that, on, on the tips question, my, my thought would be that for the most part, they are included, credit card tips at least, I think, is probably making their way.
Yeah, maybe not cash tips.
But I'm sorry, you said the data was 2019, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then we have this data, Ben, up until I want to say a couple of months ago. Correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yes, yes. Last time I checked, actually it might be a tiny bit more than a couple of months. Did it make it into 2021? Is that what you're saying? Because I was remembering late 2020 was the last time I saw the data.
That's prob, you, you have the most recent numbers on there. I just looked at this 2019 year.
Well, and I think 2019 is probably a much better way to look at it versus.
Comparison.
Because we had such a gap of four, what, four months where we were completely closed. So, you know, it could be skewed. So I think 2019 would be a much better number. We're looking at that in relationship to TRT because of 2020 being so crazy. So, but as soon as we have more updated information, then we can, we'll put that into the file, so everyone will have it. Is that not in the file?
This, this, I don't think this spreadsheet's in that folder yet.
Okay.
But I just sent it to Ben. I had to just.
I'm still waiting to.
Going.
So maybe August, talk through the, maybe just talk through it right now while we're, instead of us just sitting here wasting time.
Yeah, so at a, at a high level, I just sent it over there. So whenever it shows up, we can talk about it. But at a high level, basically, it shows, just provides some numbers to support, you know, the, the level of the tourism industry in Grand County, as well as the fact that, you know, Accommodation and Food Services is the number one. We actually pay higher than the state average wage in those sectors, which kind of makes sense, but it is still the lowest, one of the lowest paying sectors in, in, in our county. And that's fairly true for the other tourism industries, I believe. Retail is the only one where we pay less than the state average wage-wise in terms of recreation, arts and tourist. I don't think tourism is called, but recreation, arts and I hear, if you want to go to the last tab, Ben. Wage capture. I suppose it's a table. Yeah, so you can see, you can see the, that Accommodation and Food Services, we pay $579 on average per month more than the state in that sector, despite it being one of our lowest paying wages by sector. Retail trade, again, a huge part of our economy, again, one of the lowest sector of our economy. We actually paid less than the state average. Arts, Entertainment and Recreation, that captures all the outfitters for the most part. Another huge part of the economy, another low-paying part of our economy, we do pay higher than the state average. So those are just kind of some quick takeaways, just to kind of add some color to the, the statistics I mentioned in our, our last month's meeting. And I will, I will put the updated version of this in the folder. But if there's any questions about this, I'm happy to, to dive in a little bit, or we can.
I think based on Emily's question, this gives us, you know, obviously an overview of, of what happened. Well, in 2019, but we'll up, we will update it with 2020 and do a comparison, just, you know, so we have it. And then I think, is this, I can't remember, is this annually or does this come out quarterly? Do we know?
Well, this, this data is available monthly.
Monthly.
But it lags quite a considerable amount.
Right.
So I just wanted to get a complete look, smooth out to, to take into account all of the seasonalities and just do a whole, complete year that we have pre-COVID.
Can I also ask real, real quick? I seem to recall when we looked at, like, you know, job stuff for our career in technical education statistics, that Grand County was lumped into a region and it was really hard, you know, like with other counties. Is this, is this, are these data separate?
I'm not sure where, where the, what dataset you're referring to.
But this was Grand County only?
Yeah, for the Department of Workforce Services, they have county-specific data.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's what we were trying to look at because Emily had a specific, couple of specific questions. And we wanted to take a look at, you know, provide that information to her. So we do, this is what August wasn't, was able to, to find, which I think is, you know, really interesting. And again, we'll look at 2020, and then as soon as we can get a handle on 21, then we can certainly keep updating this, so we can see how we're trending.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be interested to see 2021 spring. I know wages have jumped quite a bit, just.
Definitely.
How, how are the businesses, what are you hearing from the businesses for the season?
I'm, I mean, we're, we just, I mean, what I'm hearing is there's just, you know, there's not enough bodies to fill the jobs. Wage, definitely, there's a huge wage competition to get the, the bodies that are here. Turnover, people are, you know, jumping ship for 25 cents an hour. I mean, it's just, it's been really, it's been a really rough spring. I mean, great, great, I guess, you know, revenue-wise, but really rough as far as employees and, and wages and all of that goes.
Do you happen to know, I, I know that McDonald's is paying eight, they say $18 an hour, but someone said that's really not what hap, is happening because they're starting you at a lower wage and then you have to stay there for some length of time before you get $18 an hour.
I don't know all of the, I don't know all the details, but I do know there are some stipulations and, and part of that is motivation to get people to stay, you know, a little bit longer. I, I have a, actually have a request in right now from a reporter from the Salt Lake Tribune who is doing a story on that. So I imagine we'll all learn a little more about it. About the McDonald's situation in particular, but, but yes, I would say, I mean, I, I obviously I don't have the, you know, correct polls and data and all of that, but I'm not hearing anybody who's paying much less than 15 or.
Yeah, I heard one of the hotels just went to, I think it was 21, I believe, an hour. So I heard that today. I'm not sure of the details. So I heard that today. I'm not sure of the details, but I guess we'll see what happens. It's a little disappointing to see the differences in the monthly wage from our county to the state when our, you know. We have such a, you know, unique situation here. The cost of living and and just everything that happens here, that our wages could be, you know, below some of the state levels, so.
Right. I know that there are restaurants who are closing when they wouldn't normally close because of workforce shortage as well. And then, you know, I mean, hotels aren't closing, but definitely everybody's kind of looking for out of the box ideas, hiring younger. I know that my 14 year old could go get a job cleaning rooms if she wanted to. And a lot of, I've actually heard from the high school that there are quite a few students. So the high school has a policy where if if kids miss 10 days in a row with no response, you know, from parents and, you know, outreach and whatnot, they're automatically dropped. And of course, they can re-register, but there's just kind of this statewide 10 day policy. And they have actually had to drop quite a few stu- students. And when they're doing their investigations, they're learning that they are working, they are going to work.
Wow. Oh, that's scary.
Yeah, it's a problem. And so I definitely think it needs to be a part of this, you know, diversification conversation for sure. And especially in discussing bringing in, you know, new businesses and whatnot. If we are going to continue to support what we have and grow, we also have to grow our resident base. We have to really look at, you know, the the inequality of how quickly our our, you know, business is growing versus our resident base.
You know, I had a couple of conversations, I had a conversation last week with a couple of individuals. But we were, we were discussing about possibly if we can take the SB 95 funding that we're going to get, which is going to come, I have to apply for that, and take part of that and maybe use it to help with interns, but sort of pay, either pay the company to pay the interns somehow offset that cost. Or, you know, is there a way for us to attract people here? Would we be allowed to use that funding for to offset housing, you know, housing costs somehow? Using grant funding to bring people in. I mean, we have to do something. I can't imagine that we just let this continue because it's really, you know, going to impact tourists. People aren't going to want to come here if they have a bad visit or if the service is horrible and the food's horrible and they can't get waited on and all the rest of it. So how do we, you know, is there a way that we can have some sort of funding that can help bring, maybe bring individuals here where we're doing something to subsidize their rental costs? I don't know if that's possible, but I I certainly would like to address it for.
I think that's great. We've also had a bunch of chamber chats recently, which is just businesses who get on and just kind of informally discuss all of the issues. And of course, housing is a huge problem. And we've talked about even incentivizing, I mean, if we're going to be, you know, talking about subsidizing and whatnot, new builds are a really big challenge right now because of land costs, labor costs, material costs, just the lack of contractors available, all of it. New builds just really aren't a super affordable option or a quick option right now. And so, you know, I've kind of thrown around the idea of trying to subsidize and incentivize owners to turn their nightly rentals back into long term rentals. How do we, how do we, you know, ripen the pot that 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 seems like a good option for that?
That's something we could investigate. I don't know if it's possible, but if there's a way to, you know, say for a length of time, like a year, they'd have to sign up for a year. I don't know, I'm just giving this out there, sign up for a year, agree to have local, you know, people live in that rented for a year and and we sort of subsidize it somehow, the cost of it, so that we have employees that can live in these residences. And and somehow, if we can't do it now, put this in the plan for next spring so we're not running into the same situation that we're in right now. Like come up with a strategy for how do we recruit people to come here? How do we help offset the cost of living for these people, make them stay here for this whole year? And and do something in the way of, I don't know, grant funding? Because if we can take it back and relate it back to tourism, I don't know, maybe it's something that we could do.
Right.
I think it needs to be investigated.
I think so too. And then it just along those same lines, you know, whenever we are going to have the discussion of obstacles as far as local government or policies go, rezoning, we definitely need to have those housing discussions as well. I know there has been a couple of rezoning requests that have been turned down that could have really, you know, provided some higher density housing. And so we just really need to look and get everybody on that same page and and include that in the conversation as well as, you know, what might be keeping businesses from relocating.
Carly, is there anything that can be done with the Walnut Lane? I know that it's coming in stages and I have no idea how that all works. It's way above me. But is there, and I know it's it's going to happen within a several years of time, but is there any way that that the county or we could somehow find funding or get grant funding or go to the state, do something to try to secure funding so that can happen sooner?
Oh, like to speed up the Walnut Lane issue? I think it's just, it's sort of on track, like funding is not a problem for Walnut Lane. We secured that 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 bond. So we're just waiting for design and for, and we're doing like multiple moves right now. So that's like the quickest way we can put together some of that housing. And I mean, what's interesting about that housing is it's replacing for the most part, like existing homes.
Right.
Sort of, it's not, there is capacity being created, but it's not like a whole new development that'll be coming online. But I mean, I think there are, of course, there's money coming from like ARPA, from the American Rescue Plan, and also the local match program that the state will be administering, which includes affordable housing. That's an appropriate use of those grants. So I think we should definitely all sort of, you know, see if we can leverage those efforts, maybe on a county and municipal level or just, you know, each of us doing it kind of on our own. And how we, I would be curious to see how we like coordinate with the housing authority, the land trust and and everyone in securing those those kinds of funds. It's interesting, Lacy did bring up a really good point. We're kind of struggling with some rezones because there's no guarantee that affordable housing will necessarily go into those high density rezones. And that's what like my council really struggled with for the last application because we're just afraid that we're making the problem much worse and gobbling up, you know, undeveloped land to be again, like high end housing, which would be such a lost opportunity. So but taking a look at either incentives or regulations that require housing to be locally occupied might be something that we have to discover.
Would deed restrictions do anything, having deed restrictions, you know?
That's something that's been explored as an option, like to require, like if you get more density in like the R3, R4, if you have, you know, affordable housing, we also have a pad that allows for for that option. The issue is that developers just aren't, you know, chomping down on the pad. It doesn't have like the right, I think the formula might be a little off or whatever, it hasn't been used. And so I think it might be worth discussing, like making it requirements for like, if you want a certain density in the R3, you have to either do some sort of, it has to be reserved for locals for their occupation or there is a deed restriction requirement. But I imagine the deed restriction requirement would be controversial. You know, I don't know what kind of stuff we get.
Well, and just along with that, I think it's important to get business input, like if you're looking at re, you know, if you're looking at redoing the pad or adding or taking away from it, getting input of what would entice people to use that. Because I, part of the problem I'm seeing is these, you know, these regulations are being created and then and then rather than, you know, getting the result we want, people just, yeah, aren't using them because they, the benefits cannot be found. They can't make the numbers work. And so we need to really work together to figure out how it can, it can benefit both ways. So it's actually used.
Yeah. Ricardo, do you have inclusionary zoning in any areas? And then sometimes that's not a a great tool, but it does, it does establish criteria for affordable housing for every device.
I don't know. Like we do, I think the pad is kind of inclusionary zoning, maybe, but I'm not super familiar with it. We just have never had to like go down that path yet. So it's definitely like we're looking at sort of as many options as we can. And and when it like, there's like what the city can do from like a zoning perspective in Grand County too. And then like as an employer or like with other employers, are there, is it worth us, you know, not necessarily building new like facilities or housing, but like purchasing, you know, short term rentals and turning them into longer term housing for our employees and maybe partnering with businesses and to maybe like convert the existing stock of short term into long term housing.
And adaptive reuse of any existing or empty buildings? I'm not sure if the university campus is one of those, but there seems to be some empty space around that I see.
Yeah, I don't know. Does anyone know what's planned for that property? I don't know.
Well, I I've been trying to, we, we went to, you know, city, county, all other state agencies to, you know, before, you know, in the hopes that we could find something useful for the community. Not that, not that a private entity won't do something useful, but you know. And so the city and the county, the school district, everybody looked at it, a lot of people got excited, but in the end, it wasn't, it wasn't a good fit. And so it's probably going to go on the market here pretty soon. So and I would love.
What's the sale price? Leana, is the sale price like a dollar?
I I don't, I don't know. We just had an appraisal done and it's, it's a chunk of change.
It is. So that's what you're looking for from the public sector too, is the same market value?
Well, we could, I think it would have been easier to do if we sort of did a, did the state to state entity to state entity piece. But now when we go to public market, you know, we need the money, so it'll probably be a competitive thing. So that's why if there's still opportunity, I don't know, I'm going to ask my mid-realtor about how that, how that would work. Because, you know, if there were, if there were a private developer who did something, you know, but but we're an equal opportunity state. You know, so I don't know what the rules are on that. But if you have ideas for me to run up the line at the university, I would love to hear them because we would like to, you know, not just walk away from that and leave it open for, you know, high end housing, right? We would like to have it do something that benefits some of the needs that are in the community.
So you can't even establish sustainability criteria for your market sales, say for gray water recycling or 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 green technologies, those kinds of things. Usually if you're a state agency, you can actually put a rider on for the sale. And and inclusionary zoning or housing, affordable housing can be one of those.
Yeah, I'll ask about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a prime location. It would be great if we could put something in there that could benefit, you know, the community rather than just another hotel or, you know, something that will go in there that will just be more of the same of what we have, so.
If anybody has has suggestions or recommendations, because, you know, to explore options and what we're able to do, I'd love to take those up the line.
Oh. Cool. Okay. Um, is there anything else that anyone would like to discuss or address?
Hey, this is Brandon. Our fire, I'm at work still. I got held up our firewall, wouldn't let my mic through.
Uh oh.
I'm sure. Sorry about that, but I had one thing that came up this week. So we had a visit by the Utah Mining Association out at the Potash Mine. And they brought with them the Utah Inland Port Authority. I don't know if anybody's very familiar with that. I I kind of misunderstood what they were working towards. My understanding that it was they were focused on rail development in the coal mining areas of Emery County and then some of the the oil stuff up in the booklets. But I don't know if they pivoted or they just kind of framed it a little different. But they're attempting to become basically the logistics center for the state. And because they they appropriated a lot of funds to that, and it sounds like some of that rail development they had in mind, isn't going to happen. They are looking for ideas of where that funding can go for community, community logistics. So they're reaching out to mines for for like bulk logistics, but they said they're also trying to brainstorm on any other logistical problems for transport, shipments, stuff like that. I don't know exactly how that fits into Grand County's plan, but they were, they were looking at that spur that comes down and serves us and and is going to serve the the tourist train and serves them.
Yep.
So if if anybody, I can reach out to them. I didn't, I didn't, I did, they kind of surprised visited, so I didn't have a chance to bring up the economic development portion. I was just speaking on behalf of Intrepid. But I could probably reach out to them a little further if if we think that's a good point of interest.
I know that the inland, I did attend one meeting last year with the inland port and they were looking at somewhere in either Carbon County, Emery County, or Grand County, where they could establish, you know, a a center, a port. So I do believe that Carbon County was actively trying to pursue something there. So I'm not sure. I know there's a lot of controversy about the inland port up in Salt Lake and, you know, in and around.
Yeah, that was my familiarity was.
Yeah, that's.
But their agenda is a lot broader than what I had realized.
Yeah, yeah. I, well, I think.
They kind of align quite well with what this group is trying to accomplish as far as their goals. Well, if you got a contact, you might, you might reach out to them again.
I did have to, I do have a contact, but if you can check on your end, it might be really good for us to either meet with them, have a couple of us meet with them, or have them make a presentation to this group since we're meeting every month.
That's, that's exactly what I had in mind. So that's, that's, I'll reach out to her and see if if you get, if everybody, if everybody was open to that, maybe see if she'd be interested in addressing the group.
Well, let's put it this way, they have funding. I think we need to be open to listen, to hear what they might have available and see if it fits into, you know, what we're trying to do or we can utilize it in any way. So I.
Yeah, that's what I expected. So I know, I know the copper mine, they have logistical problems with, you know, they they switched to in situ, leach mining, and they're having pretty large quantities of acid shipped off of that spur, the Dead Horse Point spur and moved down to their mine. It goes right through town. Seems like, it seemed like they're, if they, if they could have incentive to extend that spur through Grand County down south, they'd be interested in that. I have no idea for sure. The other opportunity that I brought up with them was the Paradox Valley Unit, that brine collection unit over across the border. One of the proposals for that would be to convert that into a salt production facility instead of just reinjection. And so they had all those earthquake issues that I'm sure everybody's familiar with and they had to shut that project down.
Yeah.
So right now, pollution is just going right back into the Delores River. They don't have a long term plan in place. One of the proposals was to create a salt production facility. If if they were going to do that, that would also flow through Grand County. That's also a well funded entity, this, the Solidarity Control Council for the Powder River. They just have to decide how to spend the funding. The 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 Port Authority and the Utah Mining Association, I think I can get some pretty broad support to develop that project there. to develop that project there. Um, it wouldn't, it'd be worth bringing to, um, the council's attention, that that could be an economic opportunity, um, to bring some employment into, because more would be the, the, the base for the employment for that, that op, that opportunity. Um, so it might be something to bring to the council's attention, um, in that it would add, add more truck traffic. Um, al- along with what's going on in the copper mine. So, um, something that the Port Authority could maybe address there too.
Okay. Well, Mike, Gabriel, what are your thoughts on that? Is it something we should look into?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in gathering and collecting more information, um, as you said about funding sources, but about, yeah, these impacts that we might see upcoming and how this effort, um, you know, can, um, can help us, uh, avoid, you know, more conflicts.
Yes, but Gabriel, for the council, what it would be is, is, does the council, it's kind of been a whole pattern right now on that project. Um, but because, uh, the way they presented it, the Bureau of Reclamation presented it to the public, it wasn't, um, Grand County wasn't at all included. Um, and then I personally brought up some opposition to that, um, because we are the closest rail facility. Um, and I think it's going to go through another iteration. Um, so it'll just be something for, for, for the council to be a, a lot more aware of where I think it flew under everybody's radar this last, um, iteration.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I think inviting the presenter, um, so we can ask more of these questions, I think would be a good idea.
So Brandon, do you want to reach out to your contacts and I'll reach out to the ones I have at the inland port and see what I can, do to find out, uh, more information?
Absolutely. I'll do that before, uh, the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, cool. Um.
Um, I had one other thing I, I missed on. So on the, on the data that August presented, um, what's the chance, August, that there's any, uh, information on age, um, related data to employment in the county? Cause I know, um, at our plant particularly, we're going to lose about half of our employees over the next 10 years to retirement. Um, I, and I'd be really curious to know if that's, if other businesses in the county are facing that issue.
I want to say there is some type of data out there. Um, I'd have to go back. Uh, I'm not sure if Kimsey Gardner has it. I know that there is data relative to that available. So.
Yeah, um, Utah Jobs provides that data.
Would it be possible to get that added to that spreadsheet also? Just, um, a little more awareness about what, what the county's facing in the future?
Sure. Yeah, if we can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let us know what else you're looking for and we will, uh, we want to provide as much information as possible for this group, to be as effective as possible. So, um, you know, and I was glad Emily brought that up at the last meeting to let us, take a look at this wage gap and, you know, we started diving into it. So, um, but I think the more that we can understand, kind of what we're all made up of in all these sectors and how it's going to impact us, for instance, that way, you know, over the next 10 years with, with people retiring and how are we going to replace those, those, jobs if there are no, you know, people aren't living, being able to live here and they're all second homes, and we don't have replacements for those, we're going to be in a real, you know, it's going to impact us all the way around. So, um, yeah, I think we need to, we'll take a look at that and upload that information as we gather it.
Awesome. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Brandon, very much.
I'm curious, Brandon, do you guys have?
Can I ask, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead, Leanna.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask real quick if, if, um, Intrepid has, uh, hiring difficulties, if you're, you know, locals that are importing people with housing, if housing affects.
We haven't really run into that just because we're one of the highest, highest pay rates. So it's been pretty easy for us to get employees.
And what's your, what's your average, um, length of, you know, how long have people been employed there? What's your average length of employment by the staff?
If, if you, if you exclude, uh, retirements, um, are, we're effectively zero turnover.
Yeah, so.
So.
Yeah, so your, your people are in a much different position, which is.
A lot of our people retire with, you know, 30 plus years.
Yeah, which is good. Cool. Okay, John?
Yeah, Brandon, I was going to ask, you mentioned the Port Authority. That twigged me because Washington's got a whole system of port authorities that actually are in charge of, uh, economic development. Is there a port authority in Utah?
Yeah, so it's the Utah Inland Port Authority. So it's a bit of an oxymoron. Um, but, uh, my understanding was as the coal, um, areas started to kind of close down, they were hoping to move some of that coal overseas. Um, and I, and so they, they formed the authority, but I don't think, uh, obviously the coal continued to decline overseas also. Um, so it's kind of a, yeah, it, it's kind of an odd entity, but, but their, their general charter is that they want to oversee logistics within the state. Um, that being that rail, um, or highway logistics.
Multimodal kind of things.
Yeah, but they also, I mean, they're also open to the ideas of digital, um, logistics, you know, so, so the flow of, of online goods.
Yeah, they, they, um, they are putting in a huge, um, area up in Salt Lake. I, I, uh, near the airport, which has been very controversial over the last, I don't know how many years. Um, so, you know, because there, there's concerns about major pollution and tra- more traffic and, you know, all of that. So, um, uh, but they're also looking to other parts of, the state for areas where they can have these other ports for transfer of, goods, uh, you know, to move them because where we're located, we're in an ideal, situation to move goods east or west. So, and we have the highway systems. So I think, you know, we've got the pluses, but then it comes, but that brings a lot of controversy with all the pollution congestion and just everything else.
The strange model that's in Washington State is the port authorities actually look after, they have taxation authority, localized taxation authority. And they have three elected officials in each one of them. So I think Tacoma and, and Seattle have two or, have five elected officials, and they actually have taxation authority to encourage economic development within each one of the regions. Uh, so they're really focused on the broad range of economic development in, in, within a region, a fairly large region. Uh, usually a three or four county area. Uh, so the Shland Douglas County, uh, there was two, one in Douglas County and there's one in Shland County. Uh, actually had authority to gather taxes and, uh, elect officials and then to direct, put in, direct to economic development. So, I guess that model, the port authority we're talking about is really more of a transportation, uh, which is good, uh, I guess. But, there's no such thing as a state mandated local taxation authority in Utah. I take it.
No. Well, and there are other issues with like the port up in Salt Lake and I think it, there might be issues with whatever they create down here is, you don't have zoning authority over it. So it's the state and that board and you don't necessarily get the tax increment either. So it becomes a little island of the state. It's a lot like SITLA actually operates, sort of, uh, we would probably see some similar issues unless we can negotiate a better deal in Salt Lake City could, on, um, on that, uh, that development. But it, you know, they, what they do and there are big issues with the, port up there, which is they're doing a huge amount of development that the city would then have to serve with their utility infrastructure. So, it sort of sped up everyone's plans and creates this huge, you know, this new infrastructure that requires a, a lot of investment, by the local community and the local community has no say over it and doesn't get a tax increment.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it was really, you know, very high, highly controversial situation. So, um, anyway.
Elaine, if I could, I was just going to share my screen here if you don't mind, just quickly if I can do this properly, of course. I don't know if I'm able to do it properly or not. Uh, okay, where am I going to go with this? Can you see that?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, so this, this is kind of a, this is Canadian, but, uh, I put this together, this is a flow chart that actually shows you kind of a, uh, a reference point for our strategic, strategic plan, the DOCP would be the general plan and then the relationship between, uh, discussion papers, uh, action plans, master plans, uh, bylaws, policies, bylaws, we call codes here. Uh, open houses, workshops, community indicators, those kinds of things and on an annual basis. And then the, the kind of loop. So this would, this, this county strategic plan, city strategic plan would be there, uh, the, the general plan would be here. Uh, this pro, this upper end, upper end process would be a quick one, uh, relatively speaking. And then it would be re-informed through community engagement over time. Uh, and then this would have all the elements in it. Uh, the, the master plans, like the transportation master plan obviously would be, in that part of it too. This actually needs another arrow, which would be re-informing, uh, these, actually I guess that's part, part of that's here. These master plans re-inform, uh, the plan itself. So there's, it's somewhat of a pictorial of, the, the relationships between strategic planning, uh, reporting. A lot of councils don't really understand that, uh, long-range planning doesn't have any budget numbers in it. It is, it's a wish list and that's what makes it easier to do. Uh, it's still a challenge obviously to get good strategic plans together. Uh, but it's not bogged down by budget, uh, and finance, financial implications.
Wow, that's, uh, that's, that's really interesting and I think gives us a better idea of what, you know, how, how you tend to approach that. So, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, so I don't know if that helps explain what do I do here?
No, it does. It really, I think it really does. Um, I think it, 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 it gives us more of a clear, um, you know, how, how you see things moving forward. So, no, I think it's, I think it's great. Like I said, we, it's almost like we have a clean slate and we're able to start implementing, uh, and, and to look forward. I think that's the positive, uh, thing for us. So, um, I, I think we're at a, such a low threshold right now that, everything that can be done will take us up and forward. So, cool. Well, thank you. Emily?
Um, I'm going to put on my little planner hat, not, not capital P planner, lowercase p planner. Um, I, forgive me, I'm coming out of hours of meetings. I'm also in a very executional mode right now. Um, the Planning Commission has started talking about coming together in person, um, and knowing that that might not be where everyone's comfort level is. But for example, as a body, with John joining, uh, staff, we are hoping to, narrow down to very clear objectives. And I wonder if this group, like, these are such useful meetings, but I also feel like coming out of the last one, there's just so much to be done. And what would be the appetite for everyone here for our next meeting of trying to get to a clear set of, these are the objectives that we think are most urgent, uh, that we are most capable of tackling. And almost sort of, you know, if you've ever done like a two by two of like, what's a high priority, what's not a high priority, what's easily, you know, easily done or accessible, what's a moonshot and try and find those things that we think are, are in that upper quadrant. Cause I just, there's just so much and there's so many stakeholders and there's so many moving pieces. And I would really like to see this group be very effective. And I just think that might be one way of, um, targeting, um, some of the things that we want to execute on and some of the things that we want to achieve in a more actionable way. That's very jargony, I'm sorry, but.
No, I, I think that's great. And that's where I'm at because this, uh, this diversification action plan was overwhelming when I started looking at it. And then when August and Ben came on, they tried to sort of dissect it and put it into that, that form and the Google Sheets because it, it's so big and so broad and there's so much. So, I'm right there with you. I'm on the same page. Um, and maybe because everything that's on the Google Sheets, for that, um, action, uh, plan, that is pulled right out of, this document that was passed by the commissioner. So maybe we look at that particular sheet, and, and dissect that further on that action. I'd just say, okay, these are the top two priorities or, you know, and then drill down. So I'm, I'm all for that because we, you're right. It's so broad and so big, and we're never going to get to everything. So, um, you know, in the next 12 to 18 months. So.
Well, and there may be parts of this that overlap with other initiatives that certain groups are already tackling, um, across the county. So we may also be able to find some of those dependencies and some of the places where there's, you know, we can, we can give away some of our Legos and support where it's already happening and, and that gives us time to really focus on the things we think as a body we can achieve. So.
Yeah, I, any other?
My Ted Talk.
Any other comments or recommendations?
I thought Emily was going to go towards the joint planning commission meeting with the city.
There's so many things.
I know there's so many things, but I thought that would be a good step to have. Carly, I'm not sure if that's ever happened, but, uh, I know there's joint commission council meetings I've heard. Uh, and I think this group would be, uh, not that you want to get it too large, but I think that interaction is really important. If you're just sharing ideas, I mean, it isn't necessarily, sometimes just sharing information is enough. Uh, so, uh, these joint commission meetings are joint council meetings and joint, uh, planning meetings as well as this group of two would be an important, uh, aspect for that. Uh, and what comes out of those can be really more of a relationship building exercise rather than maybe what Emily's getting at, the longer, longer range kinds of questions and maybe the, you know, the short-term stuff, of course. Uh, we actually, we took that general plan implementation strategy and put an implementation group together when we got a really good, when we really got the whole thing together, uh, that we thought was worthwhile. And that implementation committee was a subset of, of this group and other groups that were strategic thinking.
So, so what would you like to see as the next steps, I guess? Where do we go from, from here, um, as we start to move forward? Do you all want to take a look at that, um, action, the action items and sort of, send over what you think would be the, the points that we should address? Uh, and we'll, you know, refine what we have there to just, uh, a few. Do you want to, um, do we want to meet? I mean, I'm not adverse to meeting in person. I don't know if in-person meetings is something that works, for all of you. Uh, it, you know, would be fine for me. You can let me know that and we could certainly secure, um, an in-person meeting. Um, and maybe we have a representative of, from this group go and, and maybe meet with the Planning Commission. I don't know. Emily, what would your thoughts be?
Well, uh, at this point, the Planning Commission, the next two meetings are going to be, well, this next one is going to be information gathering. The one after that, I think is going to be more action oriented to what John was describing of, making sure that as a body, we're supporting staff with the priorities that staff has and that, uh, the body has, you know, is effectively directing the areas that we'd like to see prioritized and so on. Um, I'd love to be able to, I mean, there's just so many moving parts. I think let's let those two meetings go past. And John, you and I can stay close because that'll be about a month out coinciding with this meeting. Maybe there's an opportunity to, either bring Elaine, you to the meeting that we're talking about those things or anyone from this group that wants to participate or, bringing information back so we can figure that out as we get deeper into the month. Um, I mean, I'm looking at this spreadsheet and I already see some, some goal, some dates around goals that have passed and I, I, I would just maybe, one small thing that would be helpful is, uh, an assessment from your office, Elaine. You know, maybe with the consultation with John and the work that he already has planned of, are these framed narrow enough? Are they too broad? Um, you know, why did we miss the goal? Is it just like, we don't know what we're trying to do? Is it a constraint on staff time? Cause I'd love for us to be really effective. And so even if we just looked at the ones that have already been prioritized with a sooner date, you know, that might be the prioritization to start with, unless we have a reason not to. Um, so as far as, you know, where do we want to go from here? Giving us an idea of where you think these priorities sit. Uh, giving us an idea of where you think these priorities sit. Um, do we need to get some urgency around these dates that we wanted to hit? And is there anything this body could be doing to support? Uh, who else needs to be in those conversations? If that's not a decision that we feel like we can unilaterally make and then let's make sure that we have that scheduled? And then, yeah, I think having, having conversations with a goal. So, you know, once we've identified the objectives we want to reach, having conversations with the county planning commission, the city planning commission, city council, county commission, obviously, um, to get information we need. Like, I just feel like we could spend a lot of time talking about really big ideas. Um, how can we narrow it down to the things that we actually want to retrieve, can achieve and should achieve?
Okay, well, let us take a look at it, our staff will circle back, uh, on this, um, these action items. Uh, we will take a look at them and then sort of refine them, the ones we think that are important and then we'll send that out to everyone so you can take a look at it. We'll obviously shorten the list, we'll get John's input, um, because yes, I don't want to have a meeting after meeting, and I think I said this before, and not accomplish anything. We are definitely, we're here on a mission and we have to really make what we're doing, um, we have to be productive and, and the end result is we have to accomplish something, something meaningful. So we will do that. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you for letting me force the issue on that. I, I think this will be a good, good progress forward.
Exactly, all right.
I second that. Thank you for always giving us something to do, Emily.
Exactly, any other comments, questions? Nope, all right. Um, so we will, um, call this meeting to an end. Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
I move to end the meeting.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks, everyone, and we'll have this out to you soon. Thank you, bye.